I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council of the City of Kingman. Today is, of course, Tuesday, May 17th at 5:00 PM. We'd like to welcome everybody who is attending, whether you're here in person or via Zoom. And of course, we'd like to recognize Mayor Miles is attending via Zoom. Hello, Mayor.
Good evening.
We would like to turn some time over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Mayor Miles?
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Mello is excused this evening. Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Dennis Cronkright of College Park Community Church. If we could stand for that, and then afterwards, we would have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer, if you would. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we come to you this day, first of all, thankful for the fact that you give us life and breath. We recognize that without that, we would not have your favor and blessing in this life. And so, we thank you. We thank you, God, that you are in charge of our lives in this city. And we give you thanks for those who are willing to serve and to represent us. And Father, as the meeting occurs tonight, we ask for your blessing upon it, for direction. We come to you in a time in our history of this nation when we are in great need, great trials faces worldwide, as well as in our own country, and then in our own city. And so, Father, we need the help of God, and we come recognizing that and desperately seeking your favor, that we might bow before you, not only with our heads and our minds, but with our hearts, and seek the blessing of God. So, we would pray that for this council, for this meeting tonight, that you would move, give wisdom where wisdom is needed, and grant guidance where that is needed. And we would give you praise for everything that you will do, and we ask it all in the great name of Jesus, our Savior and Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First on our agenda, we have appointments to our commissions and Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission appointment. The Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission currently has two vacancies. The commission has received an application from Brandon Laumeister. Mr. Laumeister is a city resident and a registered voter. Staff recommends appointment of Mr. Laumeister for a term ending on December 31st, 2024. I think Councilwoman Mello is assigned to that, but she is not here tonight. But I think we did discuss it a lot, a little bit, a couple of weeks ago, and this is another important commission that needs to be filled in this position. And I think Mr. Laumeister is here today. We would invite him to come up, and if he'd like to share or say anything.
So, the last time I applied for a commission, I didn't come up here because I wasn't quite sure what I was doing. So, this time, though, I actually graduated from high school here back in 2002, joined the military, was gone for 15 years, and then moved back here in 2018. So, one of the things, I've always been interested in what I can do to help out and make things better. I used to come back on leave, you know, every year, and as I saw Kingman grow, I was kind of like, whoa, what is going on? So, I really wanted to be a part of this and help make a positive impact. I have children here, I have nieces and nephews, and I really want them to enjoy Kingman the way I have. I've been to big cities, I've been to small towns and everything in between, and I ended up back here, so that's got to tell you something. I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you, Brandon. Any questions from council for Mr. Laumeister?
No, I just wanted to make a comment, if I could. I was so grateful that you applied for the commission. Mr. Laumeister went through the Citizens Academy, so I know that he will do a good job for us, so it's a product of our Citizens Academy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Brandon, once again, thanks. Can we have a motion, then, to approve Mr. Laumeister for appointment to this commission?
I move that way.
And you second it. Thank you, Councilwoman Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. And of course, this is a hybrid meeting with in-person attendance or call and participation and written comments. And Clerk Meredith?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We did not receive anybody registered to attend via Zoom, nor did we receive any written comments ahead of time. We do have two people present in chambers that would like to address the council.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Becky Fossen from our Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Becky.
Good evening, everybody. You'll be happy to know that I'm here on behalf of Sharon Stockbridge and not myself, so. She just wanted, she wasn't able to attend tonight, so she wanted to invite all of you tomorrow. The Run for the Wall Veterans Bride is coming through town, and she just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. It is from 1:15 to 2:30 tomorrow. It'll be at the Elks Club. And she also wanted to offer, if any of you would like to speak to the veterans, thank them for coming through, that she would really appreciate that. So, you can either let me know or get ahold of her at Harley Davidson. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Becky. Ms. Donna McCoy?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council. It's Donna McCoy from Lake Havasu City, and it's always a pleasure to come and address you and say hello to you, but primarily, I just wanted to give a little hello, and we miss you, to Mayor Miles. I don't know which way I see you, but anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Donna. That is it for our call to the public. Item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, any items that we need to set apart?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to pull item 3F, please. I have.
Item F?
Mm-hmm. I have a conflict of interest. The company named, and the item is my employer.
Okay.
And Vice Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from item 3I.
3I. Okay. Those two items are pulled. So, items then on the consent agenda, items A through E, and then item G and H. Can we have a motion for approval on those items?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, starting with item F, I think Councilwoman Samley, you already explained almost everything that you need to say? Okay. And then, item I, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I do work for the partnership that's looking at buying that.
And then, Mayor, just to kind of jump in, you'd need to approve each of those individually because. Oh, yes, correct. They're each pulling from a different one. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item F, then, can we have a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda?
I move we approve item F. Sorry, Mayor.
I second.
Thank you, Mayor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And then, item I, Kingman Industrial Park Land Sale. Mr. Cooper, we don't need to read those, do we, individually?
You're fine not reading them, Mr. Vice Mayor. I apologize for promoting you earlier, and I apologize to the mayor for wrong titles. It's confusing sometimes.
Thank you, Cooper. Okay, can we have a motion, then, for approval of item I, Kingman Industrial Park Land Sale on the consent agenda?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item number four on our agenda, old business, we have none. Item number five, new business, we have none. Item number six, department reports. First, 6A, 1,800 acre land release update. Mr. Jack Plante from our Public Works.
And I'll just jump in really quick, just in our commitment to keep the council and the community up to date on our very important projects, we wanted to make sure and bring this to you. A lot of work has gone into the release, and I just, it may not sound like a lot when Jack has done, but it really, this is meeting, a lot of meetings, a lot of follow-up report reading, so I just, I want to thank Jack and his team, Doug out at the airport, for all the work that they're doing on this. And Jack, go ahead.
Well, thank you for that. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the kudos, but really, it's a team effort, and I want to make sure that that's passed along. There's a lot of people working on this, and it's definitely not an individual sport. So, with that, a couple of quick updates. So, as you guys know, we got comments back from the FAA on the initial environmental assessment that was provided to them. There were some items that were particular that we need from the, what we were calling Phase Two of the development planning. And so, we've actually received a proposal, I'm sorry, let me back that up, we've received the scope, and that's currently under review. So, we did put together a technical advisory committee, which involves a lot of stakeholders, including us, Mahvi County, between, you know, their flood control, planning and zoning, their engineering groups. So, we have a lot of people that's reviewing that. Those comments are due back by Friday, and then we're actually going to have a comment resolution meeting Tuesday to go over those and adjust the scope at that point. So, that'll move us into Phase Two. While Phase Two is underway, and we're working on the development side, we are still working on some of the comments that don't need information from the development planning. So, chapters one through four cover a lot of the environmental side, and we're going through right now, we're anticipating those being back actually by the end of next week, are those chapters being revised. There'll be some blank spots, because again, we know we need information from the development planning side, and we'll fill those in. FAA initially said that they would review those individually as they come through, and so, once we have a chance, we as staff have a chance to look at those, make sure we're happy with them, then we'll coordinate with FAA to review those and try and get a cursory review before the whole package comes in. So, that's a good thing on FAA's part to try and help us through that. The other big-ticket item that was addressed by FAA was the 401, or I'm sorry, 404 designation. So, 404 is an Army Corps designation, which is a waterway of the US. So, a lot of the washes here in Kingman actually discharge into the Colorado River. So, those are under very stringent regulations regarding environmental concerns. So, there have been a number of determinations done around the airport area. That area all discharges into Red Lake, which thankfully is not really a lake, it's just a big dry spot in the area, and so, it's a closed basin. That was one of the major concerns for FAA, so we're coordinating right now with US Army Corps of Engineers and the consultant to do a new jurisdictional determination. They're only good for five years, and the last one was, we're at the edge of that expiring. So, rather than submit something that expires while they're looking at it and have it get kicked back, we're just going ahead and moving forward with a new jurisdictional determination. Anticipated, just with conversations with US Army Corps of Engineers already, verbally, they're saying a non-determinational or non-jurisdictional determination will be provided, but we've got to have that in writing to satisfy the FAA, which is actually, we did have that in writing, but again, it was old, and FAA wouldn't accept it as was. So, with that, that's really the updates I have, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council, Mr. Plante? Or staff, or extended staff? Okay. Jack, thank you, then, and appreciate all the work that you and the staff has been doing on this.
Yeah, definitely. Like I say, certainly a team effort, so thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Okay, Manager Foggan? Our item 6B, our annual Vet Court update, and I know the judge walked in, so.
Yeah, Judge Singer's got that.
Okay, we'll turn time over to Judge Singer.
Time are going? All right, there it is. All right. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's nice to visit with you all. We like to do this about once a year and get you all an update on what's going on with the Veterans Treatment Court. I gotta admit, I kind of cringed a little bit when it was referenced. I said, please, that veterans event not be tomorrow afternoon, because I was fixing to invite you all, because we have a Vet Court graduation tomorrow at the same exact time as that veterans event. So, at 1:30 tomorrow, I know we've had a lot of you all come on over and see one of our Vet Court graduations, and we're graduating three tomorrow at the municipal court in our program. So, please join us if you can. I don't want to take away from that event over there, but either way, we're all supporting veterans, so. So, again, yes, we're graduating three tomorrow, and that will take us to 75 graduates total from the start of the program, so we're excited about that. The, I guess the best way to kind of give a summary of the past year is you all have been provided a copy of the evaluations, a summary of the evaluations from our graduates. We had 13 graduates last year, 12 filled out these evaluations, and so, I think it kind of gives you a kind of a good feel of what they're thinking, what they think about the program, what they get out of the program, you know, suggestions on improvement and things like that. And we, and our Vet Court team, you know, takes this, and we take it to heart, and we utilize it to look at ways, yes, things we're doing good, things we need to improve on. Seems that it's pretty consistent with previous years, nothing really that just jumped out at us. Well, there was just one thing that kind of, I found a little odd, was that the, probably the strongest response on here was on question number 16. My mentor helped me be successful in veterans court. I mean, every single person said strongly agree. Then you go to the end of the summary, and would you consider becoming a mentor at some point? And it was just split 50/50. So, I found that odd, because in years past, when we've done these and everything, it's usually been about 75 to 80% at least that have been interested in becoming mentors, and maybe they just need a break from the program or whatever. But that kind of leads me into what we're doing moving forward here with the Vet Court program is, when they finish our program, it's kind of like when they get out of the military. Sometimes they sort of go, you know, sometimes they go a positive direction, sometimes they go a negative direction, and that's why we have a Veterans Treatment Court, is for the ones who kind of got involved in the criminal justice system, and unfortunately, it went the wrong way. Well, what we want to do is try to prevent that moving forward, because again, they have that teamwork, they have that camaraderie, they have that mission when they're in the military, they have the same thing when they're in the Vet Court program, but what happens when they finish the Vet Court program? And again, that's all a treatment court success is based on, is recidivism, is keeping those numbers low, and you know, and again, I'm very proud that we consistently keep our recidivism rate under 10%. And so, what are we doing now to try to build on that? And one thing, we've used the mentors as kind of a way to kind of bring our graduates back into the fold, so they can mentor their fellow veterans and everything. But on top of that, I just wanted to discuss a little bit about our alumni group that we've started, and we're actually, there's a National Vet Court Conference every year. This year, it's going to be in Nashville in July, and us in Lake Havasu have actually been asked to speak on our alumni group, as well as our Veterans Resource Team, and do a presentation about it there. So, I just want to share with you all about what we're doing there and everything. The alumni group is something we kicked off last year, and the response was incredible about, you know, the veterans who have been in the program and wanting to feel connected again. And we tried, we tried to do that with the mentor program, but some of them, as you can see, maybe just aren't interested in mentoring for whatever reason. And so, the alumni group has been a successful endeavor, I think, and we keep building on it and growing with it and everything, and trying to make sure that these veterans, when they finish the Vet Court program, that again, they just don't feel lost like they did when they got out of the military in the first place. And so, we're very proud of that. We've had numerous events with them. Our next event is in July. We were trying to figure out where we're going to do that at, and then I was thinking, geez, summer, July, we better do that somewhere cooler, so we're going to do it up in the Wallopis and everything. So, we're excited about that. We're excited about speaking to other vet courts nationwide at the conference about the alumni group and how important that is to, so that they feel connected post-graduation and that they still feel, you know, a part of, a part of the team. So, that's what we've got going on. Again, we're presenting not only on the alumni group, but on our Veterans Resource Team. Mayor Miles is a part of our Veterans Resource Team. As we do the Mayor's Challenge to End Veterans Homelessness, I think we're doing a great job at that as a community, as a whole, in trying to attack veterans homelessness. And so, we're going to be speaking to them about that in July, too, about, the Veterans Resource Team is kind of a, again, we want to say stole, we borrowed the idea from Lake Havasu when they started theirs, and it's been a neat endeavor that we've had over the past six years of just having these different community partners come in once a month and talk about what they're doing for veterans and making sure that, you know, everybody knows what everybody else is doing, so that we can, you know, share and network resources for our veterans. So, we're going to be addressing that with the, at the national conference as well. So, we're excited about that, so those are two projects that we continue to work on, the alumni group and Veterans Resource Team within the Vet Court Program, that, you know, we're proud that we've got some recognition on that, and they want us to go ahead and present on that, along with our sister court in Lake Havasu. So, we're excited about that. Again, we can't do any of this without y'all. I like coming up with the summary here, because again, you enable us to be able to do this Veterans Treatment Court, and I think, you know, this shows the results of what you guys let us do, and so, we're very proud of it, and hopefully, y'all are proud of what we're trying to get done over there. So, again, if you can join us tomorrow for graduation, it should be a good graduation tomorrow, with the three vets will be graduating at 1:30 at the municipal court. Anybody have any questions?
Counsel? Yes, Councilwoman Nelson?
You've done a great job with this. I'm so excited. And to read the narrative where we have, I started this program with a lot of issues, but with the help of everyone dedicated to this program, he is now on his way to his degree. I think that's pretty impressive and really says a lot for what your program's doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a comment and a question. I want to thank you for all that you do, because I know you give it your all, and then some, so I appreciate that. Are there any resources that you wish you had more of, wish you even had, that are currently not covered in the resource team?
Well, housing is always a big issue, and, but I think in this community, it's been addressed about as well as it can be. I mean, there's always room to improve, but that has always been kind of our big struggle. But over, but I can say, and I don't want to be too critical of it, because I remember when we first got into this, and it was like, what are we doing about our homeless veterans? And now, it's been like night and day. So, yeah, we can always improve with housing and everything for our veterans, but wow, these days, when I see a veteran come before me, whether they're in custody or whatever, and they're struggling with housing issues, and we don't want them to be homeless, we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to find them somewhere, so we can get them off the streets, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Judge Singer.
All right, thank you all.
Appreciate the report, and I do, too, want to commend you, and what an honor to be asked to speak at a national conference, you and Lake Havasu.
Yeah, Judge Colaway down there. So, yeah, we're honored to do it. It's the second time they've asked us, and so, we're, yeah, we're very proud of it.
Well, we appreciate you representing Kingman.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for that agenda item. Item number seven, announcements by Mayor, council members, and City Manager. We would turn some time over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Really, the only thing that I have, and I'm hoping everybody will add it to their calendar, is coming on June 9th, which is a Thursday, we are holding our annual city department expo. We will be back at Centennial Park, and we've expanded the hours, and we're going to have it go from four to seven in an effort to try to capture more families. And so, we're looking forward to showing off equipment, talking about services, and just meeting people that are interested in city services. Obviously, we'll have candy and stuff to hand out, and we would like, always, we have a spot for all of our electeds to come and greet people, and we'll have candy for you to hand out, and we're going to set it up a little bit differently this year. We'll be a little less into the parking lot, more into the grass. That same evening, our softball games and recreation, so we'll try to leave as much parking for people that are coming to the expo and to the sporting events as possible, but looking forward to that. The team, city team, has been working on it, and we'll have, I think, some really great material to hand out and some, we'll put on a good show for everybody that comes and have good conversations. So, just wanted to have that on everybody's calendars. I know it's out in a couple of weeks, but looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Sounds like a fun evening. Councilwoman Walker?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Samley?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Councilwoman Staley?
I just, I know everybody's been reminded a few times, but I want to do it one more time, since we won't have any more meetings in May, that the Main Street Group, and in partnership with the City of Kingman, will be unveiling the Jim Hinckley bronze statue. It's, I just saw a picture of it today. It's incredible. And it'll be right in front of the train station, and that's on May 27th. Then there'll be an unveiling and a big party, so please make sure you attend.
Great, thank you. And of course, that's National Road Trip Day Two, so great events happening down here and downtown Kingman. Great, thank you. Councilwoman Nelson?
As always, this is the time of year for me to remind everyone, do not leave your iPads or phones in cars, they do explode, and please don't leave your pets or your babies in cars either. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. That's probably more important, yes, than anything else. Okay. I do want to remind everybody of events coming up next week is graduation of our three different high schools, and of course, let's be a little more cognizant of our youth on the roadways, because they are going to be celebrating, too, and we want to congratulate them for finishing high school, and this is a major event in their lives. That's a great, and that, of course, is happening from our, I think, on the 22nd, 23rd, and the 24th. No, I'm sorry, 23rd, 24th, and 25th, with different high schools happening. We do have, National Road Trip Day was mentioned, and then a couple of things I wanted to back up and mention, and I would be remiss, well, first, last Tuesday on May 10th, I was able to meet over at the hospital with hospital executives and a lot of the nursing staff over there, and to read a proclamation that the mayor had asked me to read, and that was, and it was a proclamation, a of course, proclaiming that May is National Nurses Month. And just wanted to remind everybody about that, and of course, we are thankful for the nurses in our lives and all that they do. I have a couple of kids that are in the medical profession, one's a nurse and one's working that way. So it was a great day. And then one thing I did want to apologize for doing, and I don't know how I missed this, but last city council, of course, was right before Mother's Day. So to all the women, and in my life, I wanted to apologize, but also wish them a happy Mother's Day. I know it's belated, but truly, I wanted to recognize you for all that you do, and for all of us. Thank you, Councilwoman Nelson. Anyway, that's all I have. Mayor Miles?
Well, I think most everything has been covered, Vice Mayor. I will say that things change, but last year, the expo was a lot of fun, and the staff go truly out of their way to make this an informative event and a fun event for the public. So I would just encourage everyone to be there, because it was an opportunity to just meet with a lot of our public that are just coming through to find out about the city. It's really a nice event. And the other thing I would mention is tomorrow, I think I'm doing my first podcast with a group that's talking with various mayors and others along Route 66, about Route 66. So there's, as you've mentioned already, a lot to celebrate, a lot to continue to inform the public about all the history and the events that we're having here in Kingman. And I think that's it for now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Miles. And of course, we do miss your presence in council chambers. We just continually.
Well, I miss being there, and I also want to thank Donna McCoy for her lovely comment. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, council request for future reports and updates. Counsel? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Samley, I'm sorry.
I have a request. I'd like to get some information about the fairgrounds, and we know that the county's talking about moving it and what that might mean for the city, and if there's opportunities that, you know, we can take advantage of that and use it once they move out. So if we could get some information about it, that'd be great.
Okay. Any others? Hearing none, I say that we are adjourned. And once again, thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and everyone. Bye.
Bye-bye.